Meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on November 13, 2018 at 7:30 PM. The city lost a great man this past week, Brian McCarthy, the president of this wonderful board. Brian’s accomplishments were many, his love for his community unrivaled, my deepest sympathies to his wife Gloria, his daughter Kim, and his son John, and John’s wife Alicia. Rest in peace, my friend. I’d like to call for a moment of silence in remembrance of Brian McCarthy. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the Spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
Amen. Alderman Laws will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk would please call the roll.
Alderman Gidge.
Here.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cleo.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Milizie Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O’Brian.
Present.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 14 members present.
Also in attendance this evening is Honorable Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Tonight, we’re going to have the election of the President and Vice President of the Board of Aldermen for the remaining 2018-2019 term. I will open the floor to nominations for President of the Board. Alderman Dowd.
I’d like to make a motion to nominate Alderman-at-Large Laurie Wiltshire to the office of President of the Board of Aldermen for the remaining of the 2018-2019 term.
Other nominations? Seeing none, Alderman O’Brian.
I was going to second the motion, and so on.
Looking for a motion to close.
Move that the nominations be closed at this point. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the vote of the election of Alderman-at-Large Laurie Wiltshire to the office of the President of the Aldermen to fill the remaining term of the 2018-2019 term by a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
I declare Alderman-at-Large Laurie Wiltshire duly elected to the President of the Board of Aldermen for the remaining term of 2018-2019. Corporation Counsel will administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand, please. Be solidly square, and you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as President of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Nashville, according to the best of your ability, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the statute of laws of the State of Oklahoma, so help you God.
I do. Thank you very much.
I’ll now open it up for nominations for Vice President of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Dowd.
I’d like to make a motion to nominate Alderman-at-Large Michael O’Brian, Sr., to the office of Vice President of the Board of Aldermen for the remaining of the 2018-2019 term.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, Alderman Dowd.
Motion to close nominations.
Motion is to close nominations. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now, we will vote on the election of Alderman-at-Large O’Brian to the office of Vice President of the Board of Aldermen to fill the remainder of the 2018-2019 by voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Raise your right hand, please. Be solidly square, and you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as Vice President of the National Board of Aldermen, according to the best of your ability, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the statute of laws of the State of Oklahoma, so help you God. So help you God.
Do you care to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. First, I wanted to join you in just extending, again, my condolences to Brian McCarthy’s family, Gloria, Kim, John, and Alicia. Many of us attended his wake, his funeral over the weekend. These were very sad events because Brian served the city for 25 years, longer than any member of the Board of Aldermen has in the city’s history, and during that time accomplished many things for the city. He was devoted totally to Nashua, to our schools, to our downtown, and I know that I speak for everyone, and I’m sure you will have your own words as well, but I speak for everyone when I say that, you know, we will miss Brian. Next, Madam President, I wanted to mention the revaluation and the assessments. Of course, the tax bills are out, and the revaluation which was required by the state DRA, by state law, you know, is hard for a lot of people because some people’s taxes went up and some people’s went down, and we have to, you know, feel certainly empathy for those whose taxes went up as a result of the revaluation. The revaluation does not bring in any additional money. What it does is reallocate the tax burden as between the 29,000 properties in the City of Nashua based upon market conditions, based upon the fair market value of each individual property. What the revaluation means and requires under state law is that all properties be taken to 100% of fair market value. Because of the strong housing market that we’ve seen over the last five years, the average home went up around 23% in their assessment, more equity in the house, but on the other hand, that can affect the person’s, the property owner’s taxes as well. For those whose properties went up less than 23%, they did pretty well. Some people’s taxes actually went down. Others whose taxes went up considerably, whose assessments went up more than the 23% are seeing higher taxes as a result. We did work together to pass a 1.6% increase budget to help mitigate the effects of what we could see coming for at least part of the community, those whose properties went up a lot. But I also wanted to direct your attention to the memo letter from CFO John Griffin, which addresses many of the questions raised on a communication that appears later in the agenda. I did want to point you to an attachment to CFO Griffin’s memo or letter, which is the most recent review done by the DRA, the State Department of Revenue Administration, of the Nashua Assessing Office. Now, the Department of Revenue Administration oversees everything. I mean, they have authority over assessing statewide. They adopt procedures, they have a manual, they inspect, they evaluate the performance of the various assessing departments. In addition, they did evaluate and supervise the work of KRT in doing the revaluation. Now, if you look at this report, it evaluates 14 different things here, and it says that, and it gives 14 different numbers, 12 of which are zeros, one of which is a 1, and one of which is a 2. And it says that every number should be below a 6, meaning that had the assessing department gotten 14 fives, that would still be good or acceptable. Now, the lower the score, the better. It’s not the higher the score, the better. So, even though a 70, 5 times 14, would have been acceptable, maybe a good score, the DRA awarded the assessing department a total score of 3. So, they got 12 zeros, 1-1, and 1-2, nearly a perfect review. So, certainly, everything can always get better, and we can always strive to improve, which is what we are doing in the assessing office, in terms of including building permits, making sure everything is reviewed, making sure that everybody gets a fair hearing. But, at least according to the DRA, which is giving the assessing department just a few months ago virtually a perfect score, they’re doing a pretty good job. Now, again, are there errors somewhere within 29,000 properties? Possibly. But they will continue to work as hard as they can to make sure that everything is done properly, that the DRA standards are met, and hopefully, next time they’re evaluated, they won’t get a 3 against a possible 70, but will get a 0. So, maybe next time, we’ll get a 2 or a 1 instead of a 3. But I consider a 3, when 70 is good or acceptable, quite a good score, and, again, we’re working to improve things always, but at least this is an independent verification that many of the things that they’re doing down there are proper and meet DRA standards. Next, Madam President, I wanted to mention the election day. As usual, Ms. Pietz, City Clerk, and her staff did a very good job on a pretty hectic day. We did have problems in Wards 3 and 8, especially Ward 3. Trish was over there till 1 o’clock in the morning. That is unusual. Now, a lot of the problems were caused by the machines, which had trouble with the two ballots, which were often fed into the machines at the same time, and they jammed a lot, and that was a major cause of the delay in those two wards. But what I wanted to communicate to you is that the city is not free to replace those machines. Those machines were bought like 25 years ago. We can only buy machines that are approved by the State Ballot Law Commission, and right now, that is the standard. Those machines are the only ones that are approved by the Ballot Law Commission. They are obsolete. They’re hard to get parts. They can jam. And are there better machines out there? Definitely. Many, you know, there’s other choices that would be much better now, and I think we want, in Nashua, to be able to deliver results as quickly as we can after a long day in the polls, 14 hours, and certainly, if another generation of machines gets approved by the Ballot Law Commission, I will suggest, and I think you will agree, that we should go forward and buy the new generation of machines. But it takes action by the Secretary of State and the Ballot Law Commission to approve an improved machine before we can purchase it. So, until that happens, by state law, we are stuck with what we have, even though we know they’re obsolete. So, I just wanted to let you know that we’re aware of the problems. Any human error that occurred, we will try to work that out, but the delay caused by the technology was, at least, in part imposed on us by failure of the State Ballot Law Commission to act with respect to the approval of better machines. Next, Madam President, I wanted to mention that the senior outing is Sunday noon at the Marriott. Many of our members are new and maybe not have gone to this, but the city puts on a senior lunch for the members of, any senior citizens in the city who want to go. It’s usually attended by several hundred Nashua seniors. It’s really a good time. Everyone here is invited. All Aldermen are invited. Often, Madam President has gone frequently. The main person on the Board of Aldermen who has been working on this for many years is Alderwoman Karen, who has attended for 40-some years, first for a long time as the director, for a long time as the director of Park Rec, now as a member of the Board of Aldermen who is most involved with us. It is...
You started it as a child.
It has occurred to me that we should rename the lunch the June Karen Lunch, just because of that, but we haven’t officially done that yet, although unofficially, we probably have. So, you will see June there. You will see me, and anybody who wants to come, I would encourage you to do so. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to congratulate you and Alderman O’Brian on your election to your new offices. We have many capable and dedicated members of the Board of Aldermen, so you are leading, I think, a very accomplished and, as I said, dedicated group, and so it will be my pleasure and honor to work with you as time goes on.
Thank you. I am humbled and honored to be sitting here this evening. Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I’d like to echo the mayor’s comments with regard to Brian’s family. They appreciated everything that the city did to honor Brian. Brian and I have known each other for decades, and I consider him a very close friend and mentor. We spent many, many days and nights together as friends and colleagues, numerous city meetings, time spent with our friends, parties, city events, and especially watching Patriots games. Last Sunday night, Brian, his daughter Kim, and I were present at a great football game, which Brian thoroughly enjoyed. Brian shared Patriot season tickets with me for years, and it would have been to more games than I can count. Unfortunately, a health issue ended our time with Brian as we were leaving the game. The next few hours and the next few days were very hot on his family, his friends, and the entire city of Nashua and beyond. Since last Sunday night, there have been a lot of accolades presented about Brian, and deservedly so. Brian was a very intelligent individual with a wealth of information that he could recall in an instant. If he didn’t know the answer or wasn’t sure, he’d immediately Google it on his phone, and he was always looking out for Nashua. Brian knew a great deal about construction, especially school construction. Everything on that subject that I know, I learned from him. We worked numerous school construction projects, from the Nashua High School some 16 years ago, to the five more recent elementary school projects, and now a new middle school project as Chair of the Joint Special School Building Committee, and will work hard to ensure this latest project meets or exceeds Brian’s expectations. We will strive to be under budget and ahead of schedule while building schools that all of Nashua can be proud of. One last point, Brian and I had hours of discussions regarding the Board of Aldermen. I know that Brian was very proud of this current board, and he would want us to continue to work together to make things happen and continue to make Nashua a fantastic place to live and work, to make the downtown a vibrant place and a destination all will continue to want to come to. May you rest in peace, Brian.
Other responses? Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to comment on the election day. First of all, I’d like to thank City Clerk Pietz, because I cannot believe how much work you put into both the preparation, the training, and then the execution, and then you showed up the next day, because I came in pretty early in the day just to see how things were going, and you were still working away, so that’s much appreciated. I also wanted to thank all the people who worked at the polls, who worked really long days, a really long day, all of the people who turned out to vote. There were a lot of new voters registering, the flock of lawyers who diligently attended every single step of the way, and I think the mayor has hit the nail on the head. With all these people involved in making sure this process is smooth and seamless, having the machines be the problem was really frustrating, so I would definitely encourage, maybe as a city, we could advocate to the Ballot Commission to give us something a little bit newer and more advanced than sounded like the Batcomputer from Adam West’s Batman.
Alderwoman Milizie Gola.
Thank you. First of all, I know things weren’t easy at Ward 8, so thank you for all of your work across the city and also in dealing with the situations you were presented with in Ward 8. And just to add to the mayor’s comments, I think all of us on Friday night heard many people coming through who were neighbors, members of city government, or people who owned businesses in the city, and the kind of comment or phrase that summed up the feeling of those people I interacted with, and I know many others did also, was that we not only lost a great resource for information to move the city forward, but also someone who had a depth of knowledge and historical perspective. And with so many of us not from the city or new to this position, Brian was able to always bring that to the table to aid in the understanding of what would be the best way to go forward, and I think that that’s truly a loss for the city, for all of us. And then, I guess, Alderman Wiltshire to you and Alderman O’Brian, I know this isn’t how you wanted to be where you’re sitting, but I think all of us feel we have very capable leadership, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Alderman O’Brian and I used to email and text at 1 o’clock in the morning, so beware.
Any other responses? Alderman Laws.
I’d like to congratulate you and Michael, and let you know that I’m very confident you’re going to do a great job and offer my support and help wherever you can use it. I’d like to tell Patricia that she is an amazing human being, and the city wouldn’t be the same without you, and I’m grateful for it. And I’d also like to just send out a word of gratitude to all the people who have come forth and sent their condolences for the loss of Brian, and not to me personally, as much as to the board and to the city. He is an amazing man, and we were all very lucky to have him. I know we’re going to do a great job in his honor, and I just wanted to thank all those people for reaching out.
Recognition period.
First, reading of Resolution 18-089, recognizing current and retired members of the Nashua Police Department for their exceptional work in the 1988 cold cases of Brenda Warner and Charlene Randstrom.
There being no objection, I would suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of R. 18089.
Second reading of Resolution 18-089, recognizing current and retired members of the Nashua Police Department for their exceptional work in the 1988 cold cases of Brenda Warner and Charlene Randstrom.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of R. 18-089.
Motion before us is for final passage, I’m sorry, of Resolution 1889. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Alderman Jettie and members of the Police Department who are here to be recognized, please come forward.
So, in the year 2018, whereas on October 3, 1988, Brenda Warner and Charlene Randstrom were found murdered in their Nashua home, on October 6, Anthony Barnaby provided a confession that also implicated David Kaplan. Three trials against Anthony Barnaby were held in 1989 and 1990, each ending in a mistrial. Ultimately, the charges against Anthony Barnaby and David Kaplan were dropped, and they were released and returned to their home in Canada. Whereas in 2010, then Detective Sergeant Frank Bourgeois reopened this double homicide case after attending a cold case training seminar. Detective Bourgeois and Detective Rob McLeod reviewed the investigative file, located evidence and witnesses, and discussed retesting some of the physical evidence using new technologies. The retesting resulted in finding David Kaplan’s DNA throughout the crime scene. In addition, detectives took the unusual and extraordinary steps of traveling to Listogouche, Quebec, and to Montreal to interview witnesses and defendants. New evidence of intent, along with the new DNA evidence, supported arrest warrants for Kaplan and Barnaby in May of 2011. While arrest warrants were acted upon in Canada in May of 2011, the extradition process extended over the next four years. In the end, with the assistance of the Ministers of Justice in Canada and the Department of Justice in Washington, DC, the Canadian Supreme Court ordered both Barnaby and Kaplan returned to the United States to face the murder charges. In May of 2015, Sergeant Patrick Hannan and Sergeant Daniel Maderos were assigned to this case and have seen it through to both defendants’ convictions this year. Over the seven years of their work on this case, both Sergeant Hannan and Sergeant Maderos have gone above and beyond the normal confines of investigative work to put together a triable case against each defendant. Whereas the extraordinary efforts and support provided by the Nashua Police Department led to the defendants being held accountable for the murders of Brenda Warner and Charlene Randstrom. Whereas all of the officers involved in the original investigation, who continued to be willing to attend meetings and hearings, were also crucial to achieving the successful final result. Notably, Wayne McDonald and Tim Heffron gave outstanding and persuasive testimony at a suppression hearing in February of 2017. Whereas throughout the process of preparing for trial over the last several years, the efforts of the officers in charge of Nashua’s evidence room, including Brian Betaglia, Andy Hagan, and most recently, Steve Berry, in collecting and identifying the pertinent pieces of evidence, in this case, were invaluable. Whereas the hard work, dedication, and professionalism of the Nashua Police Department greatly contributed to the success of these prosecutions. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Nashua that the mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the City of Nashua sincerely appreciate and recognize the current and retired members of the Nashua Police Department for their exceptional work on the Brenda Warner and Charlene Randstrom cases. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Reading minutes of previous meeting and public hearing. There being no objection, I declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of October 23, 2018, and October 29, 2018, and the public hearing conducted by the Budget Review Committee on October 22, 2018, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons. There being no objection, I suspend the rules to allow for the introduction of a communication received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication from John L. Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, relative to assessing department information.
There being no objection, I move that we accept the communication, place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have three people who have signed up. Jim Toner.
Thank you. I just want to take a second and thank the Board of Aldermen for the passage of R. 18089. You can't imagine how much work these officers have done over the last number of years. So we do appreciate that. The second piece is, on your agenda tonight, you have Paul Duchesne, who the mayor has reappointed to the Nashville Housing Commission. And the Housing Authority would ask when it goes to committee that we're very comfortable with Paul. He does a very good job. He is the residential liaison to the Nashville Housing Authority, so when he comes to the committee, hopefully you'll approve him. And lastly, I'll just take a little liberties and just echo the comments on Brian McCarthy. I served with him for 14 years, and he, as everybody has said tonight, he is very knowledgeable, probably the most intelligent person all of us have met. He had a great disposition, he was very patient, and he truly cared about the city of Nashville. He spent a good chunk of his life right here in the chamber. And as you consider moving forward of honoring him, I would think no better honor than maybe to name this room after him. But I would leave that up to the Board of Aldermen, and I want to thank you for your consideration.
Paul Grant.
Thank you very much. Paul Grant, 163 Harris Road, and also the Chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners. I would also like to echo on behalf of the Commissioners our condolences to Claudia McCarthy and to John and Kim, and then also to wish Madam President, Mr. Vice President, the best of luck in your new roles. I'd like to speak to a couple of the items on the agenda. First being R. 18077. I'm going to urge you to move forward on this item and to schedule that public hearing. It's clear the current process has provided an expensive method for the city and has potentially cost us a significant amount of money without any demonstrated benefit. Next item is R. 18080. I share the Board of Fire Commissioners' pleasure and thank the Budget Review Committee for moving this to the Board for final passage. The purchase of a replacement pumper for Engine Six will allow us to continue the implementation of the department's apparatus replacement plan, ensuring that our emergency response fleet will be 100% mission capable and mission ready 24/7, 365 days a year. We hope that this body will see fit to approve that purchase this evening. Relative to R. 18082, again thanks to the Budget Review Committee for moving this item to the recommendation for final passage. Station Two was constructed in 1998. As is the case with many buildings, the mechanical systems see a lot of effort and constant service. System failures have made it evident that without a replacement, maintaining comfort conditions and providing hot water will be questionable, particularly during the current heating season and the upcoming cooling season, summer AC season. As a result, effective manager, as a result, excuse me, of the effective management of the Spit Brook Road Station addition, we were able to bring the project in under budget, and we would hope that the reserves be applied to the air conditioning and HVAC. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Kevin Burgess on his election to the Board of Fire Commissioners and look forward to him being sworn in this evening. Thank you.
Roger Jacobson.
Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the Board of Aldermen, it's a great pleasure to be here this evening to witness some of the city government in action.
Could we get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Roger Jacobson. I live at 15 High Pine Avenue in Nashville, Ward One. I've been a resident of Nashville for 35 years, and during that time, this city has had the distinction of being named number one city in the United States of America, a place in which to live, and I credit that to our protection by our police department, our fire department, our wonderful schools, the education provided in our colleges, the two wonderful medical center hospitals that we have here. My reason for coming here this evening was that, like most of the residents of Nashville, I received my property tax bill on Friday. I was quite shocked when I opened it and saw an excess of 100% increase in the property tax that I have to pay in December over the July payment. My wife and I are on Social Security. The government has suggested that we might see an increase of 2.8% come January. Our increase in our government subsistence last year in January, we ended up getting only a few dollars because the Medicare increase took most of the increase that they gave us. So we were on a limited budget, a limited income, and we are asking that you consider raising the elderly tax exemption. I'd also like to ask in support of our veterans that you may consider also extending the veterans' tax credit for our honored veterans. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to all tonight and hope that you carefully consider my suggestion to you all. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Patricia Meade, City Clerk, well listed to return a vote. Special municipal election on November 6, 2018.
Alderman Karen.
I'd like to make a motion that the results recorded on the city clerk's record of returns for the Board of Fire Commissioners' race at the special municipal election on November 6, 2018 be declared final and conclusive, and that Kevin Burgess, having received the largest number of votes cast, be declared elected to the Office of Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire January 5, 2020.
You've heard the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. I declare Kevin Burgess duly elected to the Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire January 5, 2020. Is Mr. Burgess here tonight? Please come forward, and you'll be taking the oath of office.
Please raise your hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and passionately disclose your obligations and come upon you as a member of the Board of Fire Commissioners of the City of Nashville according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution, while you stay for the hand of your oath of allegiance. I give my congratulations.
Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Stephen Sacks, 74 Muscat Drive, Nashville, to the Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire September 13, 2019. I have this day appointed David Rubowski of 172 Main Street, Nashville, to the Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire December 1, 2021. And I have this day appointed DePaul Duchesne to 57 Tyler Street, Nashville, to the Nashville Housing Authority for a term to expire October 13, 2023, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I declare the report of the October 22, 2018 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 17, 2018 Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 24, 2018 Special Joint Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I declare the report of the October 24, 2018 Human Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
For second reading of Resolution 18-077, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $380,000 for various school improvements.
Alderman Dowd, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18077 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1877. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yea.
Alderman Gid.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moss.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
Resolution 1877 duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-078, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,300,000 from the Public Health and Community Service Division Building renovations.
All the women, Harriet Gathright.
I motion for final passage of R. 18078 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1878 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gid.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moss.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Finally, yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
Resolution 1878 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-079, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $5 million for the fiscal year 2019 SOAR infrastructure program.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-18-079 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1879 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gid.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moss.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
Resolution 1879 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-080, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $600,000 for various improvements of the Solid Waste Department for the Villas Land.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. 18080 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1880 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gid.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moss.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
That motion carries. Resolution 1880 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-081, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $660,000 to purchase a new cover truck for the fire department.
All the women, Malisa Golia.
Yes, I move for final passage of R. 18081 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 1881 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gid.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moss.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
Motion carries, and Resolution 1881 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-082, changing the purpose of up to $165,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the Spit Brook Fire Station 3 Building Renovations Project to the Lake Street Fire Station Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning, and Hot Water System Replacement Project.
This was also assigned to the Board of Fire Commissioners, and it was a favorable recommendation on 10-1 of 2018. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18082 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 1882 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yea.
Alderman Gid.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moss.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
Motion carries, and Resolution 18082 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-084, approving the cross-dilettant of collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Association of School Administrators and Supervisors, American Federation of School Administrators and Administrator, AFL-CIO from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2019, and related transfers.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18084.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 1884. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 18-085, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $650,000 for the purchase of two automated refuse trucks.
Alderman O'Brien, I'm sorry, before that, it was also assigned to the Board of Public Works, came out with a favorable recommendation on 10-25-18. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a recommendation of final passage of R. 18085 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 18085 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yea.
Alderman Gid.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moss.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Willshire.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
That motion carries, and R. 18085 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-086, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of additional $54,709.64 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program Funds into Community Development, Grand Activity, Path, and Pedestrian Bridge.
Alderman Cle.
I move for final passage of R-18-086.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 18086. All those, is there discussion on that? Alderman Lopez.
So we're not going to have the city clerk read all our names again?
No, doesn't require three, two-thirds vote. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. I declare Resolution 1886 duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
There are none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution 18-090, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $58,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into Police Grand Activity 2019 Violence Against Women Act, VAWA, grant program, and to authorize the transfer of matching funds-- funds.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moss, Alderman Kelly, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malisi Goya, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. I'm already on there, sorry. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-091 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $275,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation and to transit grant activity, transit capital projects.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malisi Goya, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt. I will assign this to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-092 amending Resolution 18-001 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $15,500,000 for the Permont Forming Arts Center located at 201 Main Street.
Oh, additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moss, Alderwoman Malisi Goya, Alderman Tenza. I will assign that to, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Dowd. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading of R 18092, assign it to the Budget Review Committee, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, November 26, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
Okay, the motion by Alderman Dowd is to accept the first reading of R 18092, assign it to the Budget Review Committee, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, November 26, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. New business ordinances?
First reading of ordinance 18-029 increasing the exemption amount for the blind, elderly, and disabled tax exemptions by 25% total over the next two years.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Moss, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malisi Goya, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt. That will be assigned to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for public comment. Lori Ordolano? If you'd give your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Nice to see you all. I wanted to speak to the comments that the mayor made regarding the report that John Griffin put together, and I appreciate him providing this to all of us. I had the chance to talk to Chuck Reese up at the DRA, and the document here provided does show out of the properties looked at, all of the properties, three were permitted. The one thing Chuck made clear to me is their sample is not very statistically significant. They pool together a lot of qualities that they're looking at into a single pull on permits. So, and when I asked why, he said because we're so short-staffed, we just don't have the manpower to send around town to town to do samples that are more significant. So, you know, we can pat ourselves on the back because we have a great score, and, but when we're looking at permitted data like I'm looking at, I see three permits here in the data pulled, and that isn't very statistically significant for permit issues. I think if I had come to you and said I found three permits looking at 100 that weren't correct, and I was concluding that we had a problem, you would all tell me to take a hike because it just wasn't enough data. I looked at 100 and found many more issues, and to let you know, last week I pulled another 100, and I spent part of the weekend reviewing those, and the data is equally concerning. So, I'm trying to make certain I have a sample that is statistically significant, and that's why, in fact, I went back and looked at sales data to the tune of 100 points. So, that's just a little food for thought there. When it comes to these assessments and the tax bills that just went out and the concerns we have, you know, one of the concerns I carry is that the reaction of, you know, management within the City Hall isn't what I expect for what we see with these new assessments. I think from the beginning, when I saw KRT's data and I saw so many properties that went up 40, 50, 60% or 100, I felt outraged. I mean, my gut reaction was, this is just not right. And, you know, I've heard people speak, administrators, leaders with, you know, the people who experience these hikes, they're just not going to be happy. I think we should all be unhappy with that data because that's part of the problem. You know, why do we have, why has there been growth over the last five years on the order of 25%? We assessed in 2013, and now we have properties that are 100% out. What is creating these gaps? And why do we have such wide variability? And what are we going to do to try and prevent this from happening in the future? And I know that part of the gap is caused by how we handle new sales, how we handle sales when we do an assessment, how we handle the capture of MLS data when we use those pictures to try and prove the property cards and bring them up to better valuation, and how we are capturing these permits, where this data is coming from, as far as the calculation of the permits to determine valuation when we change those cards. They all play a factor. And what you find is that the sales data seems to be the strongest data to work with. It makes total sense, it's what our assessor, KRT, uses, it's what we try to use. The sales data is the hard data. And, but what happens is if you're one of those homes that has pulled permits, even had the permits captured, the valuation or not had permits captured, the valuation on the permits is so low that you end up sliding down and staying in the low-level valuations for long periods of time, and a house that sells gets corrected usually pretty well. Certainly, when it's used in the sales cycle, it's up there nice and high with the sales data where it sold at, and all of these other homes tend to be sleepers. And we're not closing the gap, we're not catching up on these homes that are under permit work and using the MLS verification data. They're just staying too low. When it comes to, you know, we've had some exchanges, I have with Steve, and I noticed City Council put a quote in the paper about the complexities of all this stuff. I think it's not as complicated for what's going on in the city as we may want to think it is. You know, my observations in the assessing office is you have a attendance issue, and you have to have a manager who's at work, it just has to happen. And that is a big issue. I'm aware of it, and I'm pretty certain that management is aware of it. You know, somebody's got to be at the helm. The other issue is not all assessors are experienced equally. We have some seasoned assessors, and we have some assessors that are very new at this. I'm talking just a couple of years. My observation, when I look at these property cards, is a younger assessor is struggling to make the right decisions, and there doesn't appear to be any oversight to assist in that. And one case of that I can share with you, it happens to be a house in my neighborhood that's been under probably six or seven permits in the last eight years, and the owner is very wise to never let the assessor in, deny entry all the time. The house has slid under value tremendously, it's probably $150,000 under value. When the less experienced assessor goes to the home to try and get in and is denied, the homeowner simply says, just to let you know, my kitchen now is average, no longer good, and the bathroom I did, you know, four years ago is no longer good, it's average, and everything should be changed to average. And the assessor changes all the data to average. Why are we doing that? The property owner should not be standing at the door telling the assessor what grade to put on their stuff, otherwise, we can all just send our card in with a markup and say, here's how we view it, here's what it's going to be. That's a problem, and that's just an experience problem. The same assessor visited an expensive property, and the owner said, I'm valued too high, I just think I need to come down, and the assessor said, sure, I agree, wrote in the notes, I took him down, took him down pretty good. KRT rolls in the next year, this was 2017, takes him up a couple hundred thousand. I don't think down was the way it needed to go at all. But nobody's reviewing that either. That's a problem. And then there are, that assessor is visiting homes where if they don't get in or get a response at all, they're closing the permit, walking away, and assigning no value at all. That's what creates these issues with permits when it comes to equalizing out their valuations. And we clearly are struggling with that. The other thing I did this weekend, and what I hadn't thought about, all this MLS data that's online, I started realizing, I can go and pull up pictures of houses, and I can actually see what the kitchens and the bathrooms look like, and I can lay out pictures and look at the property cards and say, what did the assessor rate that as? And I can tell you, I pulled up three kitchens in my neighborhood. One, a 1970 linoleum formica kitchen, pretty disastrous, really needed a lot of work, got an average rating. The house next to it was a 2005 kitchen, very open, nice countertop, white cabinetry, pretty nice-looking kitchen, got an average rating. The third kitchen is a flip and drop-dead gorgeous granite countertop, custom cabinet, double sink, double oven. It got an average rating, too. And it's all the same assessor. So I'm now looking at pictures going, what does it take? What are the guidelines in there? I did the same with bathrooms. Find a beautiful tiled bathroom, double sink, very lovely, gets an average rating. I find a bathroom that almost looks identical, gets an excellent. Okay, that all goes on the card, and it's supposed to make a difference in valuation, but I'm still, I'm finding in general that bathrooms and kitchens and basements can raise, you know, valuations when you're looking at permits by like $3,000. Well, on a $400,000 home, why are we even bothering to waste our time at that? You're talking about raising the assessment, you know, $60,000, when really, when you go out and sell that house, you're finding the valuations are much higher. And that's where the people who are actually involved in a sale are paying so much more, and we're just missing it. And I haven't been able to, my husband and I spent a lot of time, two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, looking at property cards. There's something not right in the software, in our opinion. It just, the yard items will be on the back of the card, and when you flip it over, many cards, the yard items are not getting into the assessment at the value that's on the back of the card, by a lot. I don't know why. Some of them go on, a lot of them don't. I just, I don't understand it. And then the parameters within the database, I don't know if it's because we haven't calibrated that software in a long time, I don't know if it's because we haven't changed tables out in a long time. I still don't have answers and don't understand how permits are captured. There's just no documentation on it, and I'm learning today that it's something that I might have to access under right to know. I have to use an attorney to do that because I don't know how to ask the questions, but also, it's quite possible that how permits are used is not available for the public to know. It seems silly, and it seems like we should be able to know that, but it's possible it isn't. So all I can tell you is, what we see, and I printed $400 of permit cards, I got 400 cards now, I'm looking at a good sample size, and they just don't make a lot of sense. You know, it's just, it's just disturbing. And I think somehow we have to figure out what are the ways that we can do things better to treat these properties more equally. The lack of policy and procedure, in my opinion, is a huge problem. Not having a readable card for the public to understand their property card is very difficult, and not having anyone in the assessor's office who can explain it, they don't know what all those variables are. And somehow, I think, when you're punching the buttons, those variables are playing part of the role. You know, the rating of fixtures, you know, I'd love to see the abating process in this city include not just sales data, but comparables in your neighborhood, because you're going to find when you use comparables in your neighborhood. My husband and I looked at comparables in our neighborhood that fly under the radar, very comparable to our house, but they've just never been brought up. Well, when we compare ourselves, we're at the, you know, our price of our home would be around 500 to 510 on a rating with equal houses in our neighborhood, and I mean really good comparisons. If I use sales data, I'm going to come in closer to 570 or 580, and probably with the dispute in abating trying to make it higher. That's a big difference. $70,000 at $21 is $1,400 a year, plus the increase you get in your taxes, over five years, I'm talking $8,000, $9,000 difference potentially that I'm going to be paying because I had bought the house five years ago and with sales adjusted, and the house that's sitting there for 15 years or 20 years, has pulled permits, stayed low, not captured, is down in the mud. And I can't, they can't catch up to me, and I can't get down to them. I can't get there. That's the problem. And that's what frustrates the public, I think. I, you know, we just really need to do a better job, and I think that there's been a real lack of transparency. It's been a really grueling process, and the other thing I want to let you know, you shouldn't have to come forward with an issue and have your reputation suffer so much, as much as my husband's and my reputation suffered. And when we, when we address these issues and put our package together for KRT, we always took the position that we wanted our valuation lowered to meet the expectations of our neighbors. We used comparables in our neighborhood. We never requested that you raise people's assessments, we requested that we just be brought in line with our neighborhood. Unknown to me, when KRT decided to do a second and a third view of Berkeley Street, Berkeley Street got reviewed three times. We were not aware of that, and it was only Berkeley Street that took this second and third view. And a handful of homes, I'm going to say 10 properties were changed, six were raised again, some of them pretty high. Steve had mentioned to me when I spoke to him that he had fully expected people to be calling him pretty upset, one of the homes went up an additional $200,000. When the letter came out to the homeowners, the second round, who none of them knew this was happening, and there wasn't much of an explanation on why this happened. What do you mean? And they, of course, were no longer eligible to meet with KRT, the process was done. You're in abating now. And some of them never went forward because they didn't have a problem, and then all of a sudden, the second round, their taxes, I mean, their assessments went up 15%. So they had no avenue. People were upset, and I really believe that the city would hang that on me. And I said to two of my friends, call into the assessor's office, ask them what happened. And they were going to call anyway. I said, please find out what happened, ask them what happened. And the message that was given was, someone on your street complained, and these assessments were raised. And I was in the house of one of the people when the call was made. And I just think it's really unacceptable for your assessing office to have that script for any of their staff to use. It shows me how unwilling they are to accept responsibility for what's going on in there. You hang it on the public instead of saying, hey, we've got some issues over here, we've had some valuations get out of whack, we've made some mistakes, and we're trying to correct them. My husband and I took a blasting call at 10 o'clock at night from a neighbor over that phone call. And I just feel like that wasn't handled correct, and I've seen that happen to us before. So I think we can work on how we treat people who come forward with a concern. It just shouldn't torch your reputation. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen? I'll start on this side. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, I thank my good friend and colleague, Alderman Dowd. Your words on Brian really echoed the way that I feel, too. I lost a very good friend, as we all did, a mentor. I know Brian for many years, his lovely wife, Gloria, his kids, and, you know, it is such a shock to us all, but, you know, I do feel a hole in the heart, I'll miss a friend, and[1778.35] a hole in the heart. I'll miss a friend. And I really thank the time that I had that he was here and the special things he did for me to help me along. So I consider it, you know, an honor to have known him. The second thing is on the city elections. I like to compliment the city clerk for a fine job. And to all the candidates and those that were standing with me in the pouring rain holding totems. And I really like to thank the voters. It was pouring out and you got out to vote and it was one of the better turnouts in the city history. Thank you. You showed the process really works and that's key. And the third is, I'd like to congratulate you, Madam President, on your election as board president. As your vice president, I promise that I will try to do everything that I can to assist you in this endeavors. And I promised that before the board. And I thank the board for their support in electing me to this position. Thank you very much.
Alderman Gage.
Yes, I knew Brian for a long time. And what I not hear, but other circumstances, and he was always the person who was playing Nutbridge. But large games where he could see everybody and what was going on. And it's quite interesting. And I was wondering to myself, I'm saying, "I've got to get to know more what's happening across over there than they should know what's happening here." Because that's what Brian did. If we don't pick that up, something's going to be missing. And also, my wife, and myself, obviously, to his family, that's awful, really. So I'm sorry. And to the individual who, the clerk, who awful times during these elections, especially this one, was, broke a record. It was history. And again, standing in the people working at the elections, I mean, come on, that's unbelievable. In rain, I've never seen it rain. And I've never seen so many younger women with children coming in. I have never seen that before. And then families coming in. I was shocked at how many people came in during the pouring rain. So we all should be happy about that. And again, to Brian's family, we're awfully sorry. Our family is.
Alderman Harriet Guthright.
I too want to say ditto for everything that Mike and Ken said. But I want to say thank you, Patricia. We did have some conversations a little bit at the polls, but thank you for your concern. And to Brian's family, have our deepest sympathy. And to all the Aldermen that are sitting here that have been with him a lot longer than I have been. But I too want to say that I think he was a mentor to all of us, even to the newbies. Because whenever you ask him something, he gave you so much history, but he would give you both sides of the coin. And that's what I appreciated about Brian. So he truly will be missed.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Trish and all our people. I had an opportunity to visit three of the wards in the pouring rain. And all of them were handling huge crowds and did a fantastic job. I've never seen so many people at Ward Two. And I wanted to ask some of them, "Where were you in the last election?" But I think we had over 50% of the registered voters. Is that correct? The paper you put out today.
Yes, a little over 50.
So that's great, but where were the other 50%? You know, I hope someday we can see 75%. And I figure that's about as high as we'll ever get. But for everybody to get out to vote, thank you for voting in the pouring rain. And I think that it ran as smoothly as possible, except for one ward maybe. But yeah, so, thank you, Trish.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off by giving my condolences to Brian's family and to all of you that served so long with him. Brian McCarthy's name is truly, truly synonymous with Nashua, with the city of Nashua. And I keep saying to people over and over again, his fingerprints are all over. I'm sorry. I just keep thinking over and over again that we'll never hear him hit that gap again. But as hard as it is for us, his family is going to suffer over the next couple months. The holiday's coming. I really wish them well. And I know people like Alderman Dowd, excuse me, Dowd, and Alderman O'Brien, and Alderman Willshire, and so on. All of you who've known the family for so long will be there to help support them. And they're lucky to have you, as we were to have him. As far as the election is concerned, I want to thank all those people that came out in the rain. And for someone who stood there from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM with just a couple of breaks, yes, it was wet. And it was amazing to see how many people did bring young children. I kept making jokes and teach them young. And maybe we will get to the 75% based on the number of young people that were coming. And I'd like to thank Tricia Piazza for all that the city clerk did and everybody that was there. I left that gym just a little bit before 1:00 AM. It was a very long day. And everybody did everything they could. With the machine that kept breaking down, you kept coming in, took the wings off or some sort, just to help it get through. There were a lot of people that were complaining that they didn't think their vote was going to count. I kept reassuring them with our city clerk and everybody there, their vote would count, their vote did count. I told them if they had issues, they could contact your office in the morning. I hope you didn't have too many complaints, but that's good. And as far as the elderly tax exemption and so on, I feel strongly that the city will do the right thing by it. The veterans' tax credit, I believe that we are already at the max as far as that's concerned. And that falls under the state to set that maximum. So I believe our city does everything it can for the elderly, the disabled, the blind, and the veterans. But we also have to remember that every time we do all these wonderful things for these groups, there's another group that has to take on that burden. And I've gotten calls from that group and they are understanding, but they still do feel that we're, we have the opposite effect, that we're, they're scaring away our young. But I still believe that we will do the right thing here in the city. Thank you.
Alderman Loz.
I just want to thank Trish Ken, she's amazing. And I want to echo kind of the sentiment here. It's an amazing thing that so many people went out and voted. 50%, we can obviously do a lot better. But I just wanted to throw a joyful high five to every person who registered to vote for the first time and made it out to the polls. It's a beautiful thing. And this only works if people participate. So, thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So when you put the dollar in the vending machine and it keeps coming back out, that's really frustrating. So doing that several thousand times is what the ballot workers went through. So if you're listening, blue wave if you guys can fix the ballot machines. I think that's the secret here. So I also want to remark on the passing of another leader in our communities. Frank, the coach at the PALGym, passed away this week, too. And while he was definitely a lower key leader as compared to Alderman McCarthy, he touched a lot of lives. He trained a lot of boxers. He turned a lot of people around who were trying to express themselves physically and just needed a way to do it positively and in a way that was empowering. And that's what boxing is in a lot of the communities. That's what it is on Ash Street and for the PALG community. And Frank was, he was the guy, he was the guy who oversaw it, who coached, he made sure everybody signed in. And for me personally, it was a nightmare because I did boxing for about a summer because I was trying to train for my black belt and I figured I would get a little leg up. It turns out that running marathons is fine, training for your black belt is fine, boxing is where I had to draw the line. So Frank is tough. He's always energetic. He's always positive. He was the nicest guy I've ever met. I've never seen him angry, but I've never tried to push those buttons. He will be very much missed. His services will be this Friday. And then I wanted to express gratitude to Alderman McCarthy for his leadership. Because they say leaders create leaders, not followers. And I think that's what he did. He took it very seriously, his role as a mentor. And I think a lot of us have been touched by that and have been encouraged by it. So I would encourage everybody, as Alderman Gage did, do the research. Learn the Mason's rules, learn the Roberts rules, so you can compare the two. Learn the city history, read your packets, get involved, and inspire others. And don't just come in and attend the meetings. Prepare for them, learn about them, and be part of it. And I think that's the best way we can continue Brian's legacy. So thank you, Brian. And then in Thanksgiving, I just wanted to announce that the Boys and Girls Club Thanksgiving Dinner is going to be tomorrow night at 8:00. And then the Harbor Homes Thanksgiving is going to be next Tuesday. All are welcome.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I too would like to give my condolences to the McCarthy family. I not only knew Brian in the circle, but as an employee of the city. And he was very giving time-wise, especially when we were putting together the Stelo Stadium complex. So we can take a little lesson from him, too, to use civility in this chamber. It works. Compromise works. And Brian will be greatly missed. The other thing is the election, not only Tricia, but the whole staff, and the moderators, and selectmen, and all those people that work at the polls from 6:00 in the morning till way past closing time, they deserve a lot of congratulations. I know that in Ward Seven, because of the problems they were having with the yellow sheet, voting sheet, they decided to throw them in the box and then put them through the machine later so that they weren't jamming up. I know they had just called your office and you were off somewhere else dealing with another machine. So we need better paper, I guess. The other thing is, if you have not been to the senior outing, like I have, it is a wonderful thing. We have a lot of fun. We're going to the Marriott for the first time. When we, and I will give you a history, when we started this, we were at Alpine Grove and we would have 600 people there. Now we have about 300 to 400. We give a lot of gifts away. We have entertainment. And we have a lot of fun. And Mayor, it's probably 45 years. So, thank you. And I was five.
Alderman Kelly.
And then, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. And finally, I wish you all a happy, blessed Thanksgiving. And next week, hug all your family, give them a lot of love. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I was going to say four, two, no, it's all. I just wanted to thank everyone in the community who came to the soup kitchen auction. There was a great turnout. I know the mayor was there, Alderman Tenza was there. And it was really just a wonderful success for the soup kitchen. And I think it's on my mind, too, coming up on Thanksgiving. So making sure people in our community are food secure is no small task. I wanted to thank you, Alderman Willshire, for stepping into this role of leadership. And you as well, Alderman O'Brien. And I won't belabor, but I do want to say thank you so much, Tricia. It was an incredible day. And I went to every ward and I saw that things were going smoothly. So I appreciate that. I'm not sure that I can add too much more to what's been said about Brian. He was an incredible leader. He was an incredible asset to our community. And I know that as a new board member, I learned a lot from him in a very little time. So it's a big loss.
Alderman Jody.
I too want to acknowledge the passing of Brian McCarthy. He was a resident of Ward Five, longtime Alderman of Ward Five, and Alderman at Large for a much longer time. He was very helpful to me when I came on the board, although he never forgave me for voting against the Performing Arts Center. I didn't seem to understand my explanation that I had promised that I would vote the way the ward voted. And the ward voted against it, so that's the way I voted. He seemed to think that his vote should have been more persuasive than the rest of the ward. But he will certainly be missed. And I do want to congratulate Ward Five, 58% turnout, second only to Ward One. And I want to congratulate the new Ward Five representatives, Dan Toomey, Mike Peterson, Allison Nutting Wong, and our new Senator Melanie LeVake. Hopefully, they will represent the city of Nashua better than the people they replaced. And I do want to mention, you know, I understand what the mayor said about the DRA's review of the Assessing Department. But I think Ms. Odolino has brought up some serious issues that deserves answers. And I think that hopefully, you know, our Assessing Department and the mayor will look at those issues and come up with a better way of doing things to improve that department. I don't know, you know, I know that we're at the beginning of investigating these things. And if there are problems, I hope that the city will be responsive in resolving them. If there are not problems, then I think that we ought to be able to explain that and satisfy her concerns.
Alderman Malisa Golia.
Thank you. Again, as I said, Brian's loss is a loss for the city and to many of us in many different ways. But I think, as has been stated, the best thing we can do is to continue and carry on. And you'll vote to support Performing Arts Center legislation, right? And then just to further comment on the passing of the boxing coach at PALG. I know some of you knew Frank. Frank was honored at one time at one of the PALG dinners. I first met Frank, I was just thinking about this, like 14 or 15 years ago. And he was up supervising a couple of police officers drawing electric lines through the roof, the ceiling of what's now the PALG gym. And he oversaw the updating of the PALG gym. And if you haven't been there, it's an amazing facility where many young men and women in our community go to box recreationally, and some of them very seriously. And under Frank's guidance, we've had Silver Glove winners. And so we've had some amazing boxers come out of Nashua because of the coaching Frank has provided them. And then just with regard to the Fire Commission, as always, it's nice when something comes in under budget and we can reappropriate that money. So thank you to them for their management at the Spitbrook Road Station. And congratulations to Kevin Burgess on his being appointed to the board. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to say that. And to Mr. Vice President, congratulations to both of you. I think we're all looking forward to continuing the good work that we started here in this term in the Board of Aldermen. Thank you to Madam Clerk and her staff, all the election staff. It's a marathon day and, you know, with little really issues throughout the day. So it's another testament to the city of Nashua. So thank you. And then finally, I just wanted to send my condolences again to the McCarthy family. The thing I took from the services is that Alderman McCarthy had a vision for the city. And he was lucky enough in 25 years to see some of that vision come into fruition with the high schools, with the development of the southwest quadrant of the city. I think we all should consider ourselves lucky that we get to attempt to carry on some of that vision as well with the downtown and with the Performing Arts Center, a project that he championed right from the beginning. The other thing I took away from the services is that clearly he was an exceptional man because he has an exceptional life and an exceptional family. Anyone who was at the services knew what a tremendous job his children did in really kind of capturing Brian's personality and everything that he stood for. My one concern for his son going forward is that apparently he takes advice from Alderman Loz. And no one knows where that will lead him. But other than that, I'm sure that they're going to be, they'll remember their dad and be well-served the rest of their lives. Thanks.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. Election Day
Election Day was a roller coaster for us. We were there in the dark. It rained, it rained some more. People came by, a lot of people came by. Ward One again came in number one. Next time, I think we'll do a challenge, see if some other ward can try to beat us. You're not even close. But the other thing that happened during all of these people who were coming and going is many people stopped by and wanted to talk about Brian. Many, many people that I didn't know, they walked up to me and said, you know, he was a wonderful man, he did this for this city, or he did that for this city. And over and over again, it was just astounding, the number of people that he affected in this city. And thank you, Brian, we're going to miss you deeply. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to share your praise for the city clerk and all our poll workers who worked so hard last week and turned out a great election. I don't know what more I can say or can be said about Brian McCarthy that you haven't all said already. Brian was a friend, he was a mentor. I love Brian for who he was, he was a visionary, he brought this city to places where it may not have gone. The last thing I really can say about Brian is, he left this city a better place for having been here. Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, the joint special for the fifteenth was canceled because on the nineteenth, we're going to be assessing the construction managers for the new middle school project. We have three people that put in bids for the construction manager. And then later in the month, I think it's the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we'll be reviewing the five architects that have put in bids for the new project. One of the last things that Brian did is to review two documents that Sunday for me going forward in this project. One is a guide to safer schools, which he agreed with. And I'm going to make sure that everyone on the Board of Education, the Board of Aldermen gets a copy of this. The other was a document that I put together because we have a lot of new people on the Joint Special School Building Committee that talks to how to evaluate proposals and what to look for and formulate questions. And the members of the joint special will be getting that package as soon as I get it from Ms. Lovering. And those will probably be going out tomorrow.
Other committee announcements. Alderman Maliza Golia.
Yes, Ms. Lovering just informed me that December seventeenth is available, so we will reschedule strategic planning for that date. And also, PEDC will be Tuesday, the twentieth, at seven PM. And this is not a committee announcement, but I forgot to extend this invitation. Paul Shea from GAD was at the last PEDC meeting and invited all of the Aldermen to join him and walk at the beginning of the stroll. So I will just repeat that invitation to all of you. Hopefully, it will be a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Can we have a better turnout than we did at the Veterans' Day Parade? Just me and Trisha and her dogs. And the dogs were the ones everyone was cheering for.
And they loved it.
And the mayor was there, sorry.
Alderman O'Brien, do we have a motion?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We are adjourned.
I got a question.
At nine oh four. Thank you.